...the government. What you're being asked to consider today is a development program. Very limited use. There are no taxpayers that was involved. It's completely voluntary. It would be a tool that businesses could use based on choose. And there's no positive taxpayers or actual staff. This statute of creating program was adopted in 2013. It has very limited use. Problem we're trying to solve is that equipment that makes property more energy efficient for more work in this day saves water. It's very expensive and it has a long return on investment. So if you're going to put a new roof on a building and it's not going to break anything for 10 years, but the bank is going to want you to pay it back in five because it's an equitable loan you can back without having to answer for your pay. Then there's a cash flow problem that hurts the business and is the reason that we have a program. It's also the reason that into beautiful old downtown buildings. It's it costs so much money to bring them back to life. It has all these improvements to them and they're expensive. This program can only use if the equipment reduces energy costs, reduces water costs, or allows you to create power in the states. Create more power so you can lose less on your credit. The whole idea is that we reduce the risk to lenders accounting. You can't even trust us the money you provide the money is between a private business owner and a private lender. But that lenders' risk is reduced as we involve the county. We stretch out these loans long enough, savings, pay for costs. At least literally absolutely proved by an independent party in here. That was statute. So we should say it was real and then they would see the cost really wonderful. Okay, if you know the use of commercial property, nonprofits, churches, artificial property, they just have to be right from your taxes. We do know that industrial property and multifamily properties, at least Black and White, are banking associations and our managers did not want this to apply to loans because that is being used in this. Alright, so to page four. The whole idea is that we have that tower of pain, that five years payback, which creates a cash flow. All this program does is knock that tower off. They will just tell us to pay it back. They will pay in a larger number of smaller installments so that they can give you access or savings to pay for the project. And if you go to the next page, you'll see an example of that we're trying to do. So in Temple, in Well County, this NTI stores, old business, actually, it was becoming a red interest, right? They look like that in Temple. It's now seven stories of apartments with construction. And so next page, I'm not asking you to leave this here. There are five, I think five will put up in this sense, have a status program that we administer and will cost any of them. And at the end here is that we get paid by the orders that I'm here and they want to use the program and the grants. And so that's how we do this without any taxpayer dollars. And on the next page, we'll see that our program is our tenth year. And at the end of last year, we crossed $500 million in facilitating investment in buildings, all new, across Texas. And you can see the impact of that at the bottom of that. And I'm going to keep going because we have a few days. Okay, so if you go to the next page, one of the things I'm not proud of is that because this financing mechanism is only being used to produce these businesses where nonprofits can generate water usage. We look very hard to come up with other ways that businesses can provide this. Businesses in USDA rural areas can use this with their green grants. That's 25% grant for the government and these businesses right off the top. So they went to finance the other 75% and we can do that. They also have done loan guarantees, senior loans along with checks. SBA in December, so they can then incent you to pay loans. And I'm very excited about that because I've been working with banks, right? We can succeed our lives in our local finding institutions. We need to become a payment lender in order for us to serve all these communities. That's, okay, so do do. So I want to be honest and let you know that this is a work in progress, but we really believe that money should be tested that for, not just having this, but creating, for each person. We'd like to have some age back and handle those. I'm just glad this is a new quarter to replace old property that we're able to create more cost. We've seen this here for store tax credits, new work tax credits, opportunities on point of income. Local incentives for the exist, federal tax incentives, not whatever goes, and utility incentives. And then we are on a, maybe 10 administrators across the United States that has received that to use this program and that can afford more profits. That one is pretty sufficient. So next page. This is an office building. What I wanted to show you is what we're trying to do very simply. The middle line is fixed. These are cash flow positive, generally, they won't, not they won't, but we're coming up here too. But if you self fund, that's the other line. It takes forever for these businesses to, to get money back. And then if you are a traditional bank and buy your own, you have that interest rate. It spreads the arrow along the front. That's why we have a program that's helping families. Okay, so next couple of slides are projects we've done in Casperville. I will be honest with you, planning, everyone's doing smaller projects is very difficult, but we're doing. And so in Dean County, they were separated a couple of years ago. And they could put investors in Casperville, buying up buildings to repress that mountain. They have access to base of the area. And then on page 13, I apologize. This is the Elgin, which I call Score. So this is a feed store and Alpen and used pace for 200,000 dollars. So a project, they only had used pace for 20,000 as USDA agreement. And on foreign incentives, they took, excuse me, right off the top. That was free money for this business. Those are the kinds of collaborations that we love to be part of. The first time I realized that we could create jobs in this, since this side, with our, our day. It was in the bar, this is an empty head for somewhere planned, period. Then we turned to City Hall and it took 10 years. And so one day that our county economic director, Kat Falls, got supported me from moving from our business to Texas. We settled cheerleader uniforms, sporting goods, you know, sporting uniforms, stuff, and stuff. Dixon, and we decided that if we created a program for us, a lot of families, they did. Of course, you guys assist the project jobs and then buildings. Now, were you actually being asked to, being asked to create a mechanism that would allow the county to place an assessment, an economic development assessment on property? We could place that assessment and send it out to you. And you could hold that and you could tell the payment lender that it's on in this payment. And you would collect that past payment. That's, that's the biggest reach. Statute is very clear. If that happens, then you would recover attorney's fees, fees and interest, any other costs. And so you would be made. And without that, we know we're in a normal economy. The easiest way to handle it when that happens is probably with the only tier of tax that collection. And ask them to collect this. The only thing you can collect ahead of mortgage, Anthony, you know, senior lenders have to be sent to writing. Right? This has to be voluntary for all state. The only thing that you can collect ahead of them is the estate. Because the governmental mean on property, the government assessment mean on property is not recourse against the community and it cannot also, just like you can't pay your taxes in advance. Your insurance companies haven't happened yet, so you don't think you're going to like this. That brings you to the risk to the landlord. Why? Because only if they're applying, they can get on their statements and, and sense. As you know, we hope that now it can also inform the payment lender when they're paying us. We have to get, which in general meaning, that this is a governmental mean treated like taxes and as this is a good deal. And then finally, there's page 16, that I'm very, I'm, it's never turned out easy, it seems, but I'll. So if you want to create a program, you would start as, as the children, they have a presentation. So we get a sense of it. My contact information is on the last page. I'm happy to answer any questions that we have. Do you have the, of this is, if interested in using this? And so, just, I'm sorry. But if you're interested, this is the beginning of our, your next step. We post a report on your website and we're hoping to know what this program is. Follow with a resolution of intent. So that resolution of intent says, public, here's the report, read it. Do you understand already that coming, come to this public hearing, that's a public hearing, they have to try. And then when you're ready to go public hearing, that's the next step. Step two, and then finally, the annual resolutions. Do all governments choose to run this themselves? When a nonprofit, you're honored to, you got four years for the last step, you're going to authorize us to get any of those options. And then, yes. And the last slide is the county. May I answer any questions?
Okay.
So yes. That is now that I have orders for the investors.
Sorry, can I, can I say, this is actually a product access.
Uh, it is. I'm trying to add, but. So in this old building, they had toilets, that was question. I can't, you go to a Home Depot or Lowe's, you cannot buy a toilet. That's a quarter of the original question. In fact, you are no pattern, just like, so I can see. Closets are, clothes low and organic. And then it might be, I will get back to you. But it would be, yes, maybe irrigation if, if it's really conditioned irrigation. And if it has a rain, I think it's a small building. So the end user will pay the financing costs. They'll pay for the independent third party engineering review. And then all the hard install costs of the project and our administrative is wholly inserted assessment. So it just becomes part of what generally, what has been being assessed. None. There's also no cost, but, and of course, nobody gets anything until a program is used. And sometimes that takes a while. I don't want to tell you if there's any, if there's any, you're going to have to work with you. Or, you know, if you've got a, in your precinct, if you've got a road ring, a chamber, some other group, a judge, I think, could speak to your partnership. Foundation, thank you. And so those are, you have to do a lot of education, and you don't know about it. But the indirect benefits, the county pays, the idea of public benefit. And this is why our quality of support is so important. If people are making a lot of money, it's for your doing, it's our, we're invested in this bigger nonprofit. But our, your quality, it's a deliberate, public benefit of energy and water savings. We can free up waste and energy and water, and it's water for everybody else. But, there's a couple of things back and forth. Particularly, my favorite, the empty buildings. Job, there's really no downside. And it sounds too good, true. But half a million dollars later, I'm very proud and tell you, it's, it's a data base. Correct. Now, the city can adopt this program. Then all the other corporate areas, everybody wants to see it happen, save them not a lot of work. So we really prefer what the counties do. That's a great question. So, so if we have not had to have a local government or something discussed, if I can reduce over the high water rates, now with tariffs, we'll see. But I will tell you that that is a risk and that is something that you should fully consider. The statute, the statute, legislature, bankers, the Texas Association, this is all we can do. This would not work unless the county risks this very much. So the risk to you, if someone fails to make payment, there is going to be some things that really is a bone hog to your debt collection loss. That would be, I think, the easiest way to handle this. Choose to do it any way you want it. The statute makes very clear, so you do have this duty to do it. Only after the paid lender has sent two 30-day call notices to both property owner and senior lender. Well, stop the senior lender, it's stuck with the same corporate taxes. Makes keep the government out of it, and that's very important. But if you are asked to, and you try these penalties and interest, that all covers through the statute. So you should have no cost. The statute adds another condition, so there are any other costs, so you're right to keep your benefit. Last three quarters, eight years, that's all we have. So you might have to scrap off any course, which would be my question. Our opposition, the Secretary. This is a, this is a governmental mean that the property is treated, and how do you agree?
It's very much like that.
This is not a tax, but it's treated.
On the second, it's very much like.
Yes, sir. That's why we have to, that's what the Texas A and M says. We can put it down, I respect. Oh, absolutely. Tough question, tough question, but I may probably.
So, what you feel probably, the program is. How much assessment? It's very similar to an act of law, like you just shared. But it is all assessment. We assign that assessment, all, so you all.
Actually, we are contract with us to manage our client requests, but what makes this, we call it all the county, basically, we call it county, we call it, if necessary, we call it. It's your means, that's what we.
We did talk about the city. Six one municipality. Outside, outside of the corporate years. Through the history of, right? Do you get, do you present that to that public corporation?
Yes, yes, sir. And it's important for you to know that you know this is being tested. We know.
So our next process.
So you would publish the report, and how it works. Schedule the action item, the resolution of intent. And then have it references to the dots of the report and it sets the year and date of time. So we want to make sure that year and date of time are going to have to be covered in the system. And that is the notice. And generally, you can do this in two meetings, so you can spread it out. Statute has a sort of, maybe, but. The act of nature being asked to approve our, a lot of documents where our best practices are both technical and regulatory standards and the savings that we have.
I'll let you know.
Yes, it is part of the lobby experience, the very best, the association job. So the statute says that the senior status, the government status, I mean, it's not official until. And so that's. Yes. Thank you very much.
Marco, we're not here tonight to put in a investigation. So. See, on the, of report on your website, the collective relationship, the issue of the question. And the initial, I'd say, the, she's part of, which is second, second, of discussion. On there is not, uh, probably. I think we have on the, you can sit in, act of common, fair play, that's a report by, correct.
Well, good morning. I just wanted to come to you for six months, just into our this year. Thought I'd do a little part of our events. How we continue to grow and serve the great, kind of consent for a million, on the par. So, thought I'd go a little bit before, regarding the par, like, um, the annual events we got. And, um, the little events and things like that, so. I want to go back to the year, two twenty four, so all January through December. We hosted 315 events. So averages right in there, it's brown, but that's kind of a, we have a lot of. Yeah, remember, we have three venues that we can use for events. Four we got mostly grounds, sometimes we have surfaces, there's our alba grounds or park. We have the rodeo arena, we have the outdoor pavilions, and we're getting the exit to the building. We have the auditorium, and then it, that's. So we have a lot of places, we have a lot of events going on simultaneously. And we did quite often, there's weeks we have a lot of events. So often we have three events, one each getting going on. So, and it's kind of highlighted some things. In 2024, only three weekends weren't used. So we're, we're being, all weekends in the commissioner's auditorium, we have our weddings and our conferences. Those are all booked in 2025, that will be February. We can't, can't get in on a Saturday, uh, until I'm not going to do it this year. Already booking in to 2026, all will have been booked already in 2026. Especially to those October months, October weddings, June weddings, and post graduation. And we have 22, 22 weekends booked in our arena for the rest of 2025. So we're in April 2025. So between now and December, we have 22 weekend booked for arena events. Three venues, our tourist chain needs, we do a lot of community, kind of, community events, food drive, events like that. Another art pavilion, and also whenever I'm here, we do a lot of beach showers, things such as that. Birthday parties, the MR, we can, we're not, we're not completely familiar. So I kind of just wanted to highlight the annual events by month. If you just glance at it, and if you look, there's, there's something every month. These are 38 recurring events that happen every single year to town. And every month, we have these recurring events. And of course, you know a lot of stuff, you know, and I like to highlight the how many days, how many days long the event is. So in January, Charmaine James, girl, that was a four day event. And so the significance of that is it brings people to stay overnight, eat, get gas, hotels, a whole nine yards. So very good. So that's the city. Charmaine James, I say it's an annual event, she only comes to Texas, that's so often. She's world champion, her own racer, puts on very expensive clinics. And if you come from all around to the stand, she only chooses one arena in the state that she's doing. The second time she's come back to our, she's world champion, to be going where she wants. She chooses us. That's a little bit of our, our, our rodeo. So Texas High School Rodeo is just another, kind of, leather in our cow. Um, we've reached an eight half for several years. This is the one I tell you about, we started with one, they tried to sell, then we got up to about two or three. Now we house their entire, we host their entire season. Plus there, it's nice of these, these people, these organizations like that we have, so they did their big awards ceremony. However, our high school rodeo has grown so much, which over the years, what we've had to add our response and solve, we have to add, just from this one event, uh, rodeo. They have our rolling events. So now we have thousands of chairs set up in the arena floor. That last, two days in March, they was very, I don't see, I don't know. We roll the floor and they can come in there that morning and do a big awards ceremony. They've actually outrobed the other school. But this kid, the kids and the family, it's, it's high school and junior high. So that means mom and dad are coming, that means grandma and grandpa are probably coming too. So this is a huge community, lots of people coming here to be. I have it kind of highlighted in a blue, so you can see how many times where they've come. Those are very good. The part that is going racing, it's highlighted in red, that's another one that's started slow and then come back here. Here, and that'll be how all of their car series can be ordered. Now, I say new, the Kenna Elrod Memorial, she opened, that's a three day event. And that's where we slowly, that's going to take a little bit for you, so I'd say is. It's their third. Of course, the Captain Shad Bull Riding, that's a three day event. Bull Riding has a huge following, that one, because I think. Of course, the captain's shed, bull riding, that's a three day event, bull riding has a huge following, that one is a P C R I, a P C R I, or whatever, it's a great following, they come to them all over, just to watch their favorite bull ride. That one pretty much sells out, people come in, and they're like, where am I going to sit? They don't have a, a box seat, that one's, that one blows up the town and the neighborhood. When we started doing it, I just thought this was interesting, in May, I wanted to draw your attention to, if you didn't know, the college graduation. The junior college have ground run themselves, uh, as far as their graduation ceremonies, the last that we started in twenty twenty three, doing some of their, you know, the ceremony again, I'll read the arena, flatten it, and bring it to green. It looks like a built, it's a dorm building, however, it looks, it looks more like an auditorium, I'm very thrilled with it, and they're bringing in some cooling equipment. They can get it into the seventies, and just the door through the heater, so they've got that kind of down, that's coming up here, uh, in May. So that's a two day event. And, uh, in June, I just wanted to bring out a lot of dates, not some week long event, but doesn't bring a bunch of people to the community, but just it's part of, which I'll touch on in a second. The Fairplex giving back, providing a place, all these bits from all these different churches come to town for a week, and they go fit up lots of paint, do different things from the beginning. And so they don't fit in our church anymore, so they stay with us, uh, despite, I actually, an auditorium, really, and bring a shower trailer, and it's all tough on us, because they're there for a week. And it kind of cuts down on what we can do, and they're a bunch of kids, but during the day, they're all working, so, just kind of to stand on, on, on meetings, but it is a good thing for us to do. Of course, we have in June, uh, the Go East Rodeo Summer Series, they do all their little, uh, point nights, and then they come at the end of the year to date. And of course, August, uh, well, in Florida, I want to speak to that, but it's a good event, August, Elman Palace, four day event, uh, I don't remember the numbers, we used to call them all time. Forty thousand people in the corner, it's a huge show. And my little staff trying to keep up with that is tough, so we do, it's forced out, and it's, uh. Garden International Circus in September, we've got it every year, we love the garden circus, it's, if you haven't been to it, you need to go, it's not outside, it's not anything, it's not silly, it's, it's a whole product, it's a Vegas show. And they've got kids singing in it and leading the kids, and, and the kids are up in the stands, and the little kids are in the circus train, and they're leading activities, but it's true, regular circus. They have all kinds of animals, and it's, it's really good, and they've got the guy on the high wire, I just oversaw it, I mean, it's great, so don't count out the circus, it's amazing. Uh, the mid on in October, of course, well, we said the college rodeo, two day event, um, they've got over three hundred competitors, thirteen plus colleges, they've come to that, that's great, it's two day event. Then, uh, South Texas Showdown, the ultimate rodeo, four day event, that's one of our new, and new men after September, rodeo, it's all the professional brokers, the hugest names, you can think of, and Tim Rodeo, and Pat Tyneell Rodeo. And they bring, it's right away from me, and if you follow that at all, these guys are big, so it brings a lot of people in, to see their new ropes. And we were sitting there in the stands, watching it, and we didn't know that they'd bring them all out, and they sit on their horses, and we're like, just, you know, there's millions of dollars, just in horses standing. It was just a little scary for us, um, so it's, it's pretty neat, uh, that's a new, that's a new, big, current event. Of course, we have Angel Chamber, it's a modern roundup, it's many years old now, two day event, it turned into a two day event, which is political, brings over next stage, they've added Mark. Uh, for the host, Lovey Development, Thanksgiving Lunch, every year, for the last few years, in December, we've got the first of our grand, three day, uh, our week of fall, that's a three day event. They, yes, they found, they got their little trailer, they stay on the coast, too, it's, that's a big event, and partial, the picture gets partial in this, it's really neat, they raise money, you know, it's, as you have a name, uh, for shoot. So, one new event, uh, we have, uh, those H two, Haley Kendall's another world champion, girl racer, uh, she was the D R A, girl racing world champion in eighteen ninety, twenty twenty two, she's still killed them today. And, uh, she started last year doing her own, her dream was to do a youth girl racing, she wanted to do youth girl racing, she couldn't get in, did not have a date for her, she wanted to have it here, but that's. At our, and did not have a date, and we got her in this year, we're gonna try to keep her here, so she ended up going to the Rose Palace this year. So this is a big event, it is live streamed, which is always good for us, we're all on the Cowboy Channel all the time, the Scalpel Channel all the time, uh, Teton Ridge, live stream, we're all at home all the time. So she has been on live stream, I live on Teton Ridge, and so we live stream, and like you expect, last year, they had four hundred and twenty five entries, so that's one horse, and you gotta get, you know. The, the husband, whoever else is grabbing, and all the fans, so they do predict, uh, two thousand plus people, so we are, and we can judge for that. Okay, and just a couple of little read on these, but the last eight, just so you know, uh, how we get back to community, some of these are paid, some of these are non-paid, most of them are paid, like money, uh, like, our court is open. So we do, uh, organizational meetings, business meetings, Walmart, Middlebury Ground, Valley MS, my school, schools, proms, team dinners, we come and practice, it's not unheard of, it's the rainy season, they're developing basketball, football, they're in our arena, practice. They got it, correct. I know, it's a long story, but, yeah, since we, uh, local youth sports come out, we use all our grass, but we still have some, uh, come out and play on the grass and practice, do a lot of church events. Of course, all the four H, and etc. like meetings, stock show meetings, we do help the church departments, some district areas, health department, training, corporate control, training, health park, place, wherever. Many health fairs, food drive, practice, all the events, but we're always there, not a weekend, we did something, or a weekday, we have a lot of things to do. And then I just want to throw in another one, uh, we do sell advertising, I learned that my first team worked here, I didn't know a lot about, I did, but I didn't, uh, not made money with these venues, and I'm working more. So I, I don't have a way, and every piece of property, everything has got a sign, even the bathroom, it's all, I mean, everything has a sign, so he's like, that's funny, so. So we started selling signs inside the rodeo arena, as you probably seen, on the stall doors, uh, and then inside the concourse, when you first walk into the rodeo arena, it's signed, so those are our least expensive houses. Well, fifty eight year, we have one hundred and forty year, and three years, we have a sign, and on the concourse, so this is expensive, we got, uh, horrible storage, it's a new partner, Mexican Energy, goes for the steak farm. Bolling Bag, a larger sign, it's down like a section, four or six, and then Webco, aerial testing, which just came out of nowhere, so it's not just locally. Better see the value of it, our, our place, our Fairplex, it's on our, our rodeo arena, how many people are coming, and I know Texas may comment all the time about, we saw ourselves on TV, because they're, they're above the open box, and they see their name in lights, and they're like, live stream, rodeo, and Cowboy Channel. They see themselves, and they're like, this is hilarious. Anyway, doing great things out there, and I want to thank all of you for your support, being over the years, Kevin's going, and something rich, helped us fix it, and we work together, and Carl, we so help. Yes, we've got a great idea, we have, we have to correct this down, but I don't have, I don't have a lot of time to do it, and that's the same one, and they do very well. Anywhere. In Haiti, yes. A non-built track.
If you go down and see, he had, I said, now, Steve Brad, Brad, he was there, he was talking, he was so happy, how they transformed that into a, a, so.
Yeah, auditorium.
Really impressive, I hope, the fact that next year, it's going to be, and, and, of course, July, and we'll be out there, on the big.
It's gonna be, yes, we're gonna have a big ring at, in inside the rodeo arena, and also use all, the whole, all of the grounds will be used for the two of us.
She taught at rodeo, and we want your, your views.
They can use, and they went, we have here, they've won one rodeo here sixty seven times, so we've got banners hanging, uh, rodeo here is massive, it's a big deal. From C D's, they're talented.
I'm number six, considering act of honor, that is, our, our, is really hard, we had that, and that, we had a little thing, the consequences, took the ban off, the, the, things, that, that, we, 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 we quit bands. So now we're putting up that, you're feeling, sorry, put on it, especially, what he did, not looking all outside, but today, imagine, we use the real estate, we burn, and now we're burning, that is.